I am sitting in today for Chairman Lee, who's running a little late. I'm the Vice Chair this year, Joanne Burle, and we welcome you to our work session for January 27th. We're gonna move a couple of things around on the agenda, and we're gonna hear from the county, SPOST, from Fay de Massimo first, and the city of Acworth, and then we're gonna hear from our legislative consultants, and then Dobbins. Right, so we're gonna start with Tab 2, Item 1.
Commissioners and County Manager, we're pleased today to present our quarterly update on the 2011 SPOST. The 2011 SPOST is projected to bring in $492 million in collections, and you can see on the slide that's presented now, the breakout of those collections amongst transportation, parks and rec, public safety facilities, and the municipalities in Cobb. SPOST receipts through December of 2014, that's 35 months collected, revenue has exceeded projections by about $27.5 million, so we're very, very pleased with those results right now. With that, I'd like to introduce Mayor Tommy Allagood with the City of Acworth, and he'll be presenting the City of Acworth's report, and then it'll be followed by a report from each department. Mayor?
Thanks very much, Commissioners, County Manager. Before I come to this very exciting presentation for our 2011 SPOST update, I want to take just a minute to kinda go back over and give you a little bit of history about SPOST in the city of Acworth. As of this past November 4th, we have passed four SPOST, and this past November 4th, we passed our SPOST with all of our districts passing the SPOST by 53 percent, really a little over 53 percent, which was a record passing of a SPOST for us. So we've had four SPOST, and during the four SPOST, which range almost through 18 years, we have collected and/or will collect by the time we're finished with this last SPOST, we call this SPOST 4. We've collected about $70 million and made $70 million worth of improvements in our city, traffic, through traffic solutions, as well as a basic quality of life, stormwater and sidewalk improvements in our city. So this has been a very, very important sustainability for us, to create sustainability. I'll take you just a few minutes, direct your attention to our presentation here. First item would be, we have a total budget of $13,721 for our 2011 SPOST. It was a four-year SPOST. It began in calendar year 2012, and if you look at the list that we have there, we actually have each year with the cash flow and the SPOST projects as they have occurred. We are now finishing up the third year as of 12/31, and we have completed projects and drawn down on our SPOST dollars about $10,350, I'm sorry, $10,354,000. This past year, we completed projects and allocated dollars of $4,868,000. This coming year will be our last year of our SPOST. We will collect $3,795,000, and we'll finish up our projects. We are on schedule, and just looking at the breakdown, we've collected $295,000 a month during these last three years. We have total receipts in hand of $10,354,000, and we have committed to date $9,857,000. Either used those funds and completed projects, or we have a project committed. In this case, the committed project is our railroad crossing project. It's $1,100,000. Our SPOST breakdown is following with roads, resurfacing, parking and sidewalk projects at 42 percent of our $13,700,000. Parks is 10 percent, public safety 36 percent, railroad crossings 9 percent, then our stormwater allocation was at 3 percent. Some of the projects that we have completed under our roads and parking would be this project in our downtown, 60 parking places that we completed in June of 2012. We have continued to improve our sidewalks. We are almost finished with our sidewalk projects, resurfacing roads, and we've got a current project that we've just begun on South Side Drive. It is a road widening project that has adding another parking component to our downtown. Under our parks and recreation, we have been quite successful. This is a renovation that was done at our beach house. This beach house was built in the 1950s. This was the way that the original structure looked inside the bathrooms. We used the allocation from SPOST to make that the upgrade. That's what we look like today. Through this beach house, during the summer, we've got about 150,000 people that are using this beach house and using these facilities. That same 150,000 also have access to our playground and playground equipment. This is before, at Cobble Park, we added, upgraded our playground and pavilion, and there's what we look like today. This is a before and after on the upper slides there at our sports complex. We were able to, through the SPOST dollar allocation for our parks and recreation, we were able to actually build and add 80 new parking places with a really nice parking lot there. Here's a great partnership with the county. It is at our sports complex. It is the parking at Kenworth Park. We're adding about 150 parking places here. Once again, another great renovation to our parks and recreation at Newberry Park. Mr. Weatherford was behind this all the way and helped to actually make this happen. There's a before and after of concession stand and what the concession stand looks like today. This is at our senior baseball field that has, that gets a lot of use, and really excited about this project. We mentioned our railroad crossings. We are waiting at this point for our allocation of dollars from the GDOT. We have in place, we have our money in place, our million-dollar grant. We have five railroad crossings that we will do the upgrades for safety, as well as create the silent crossing. We'll be the only city in Georgia that actually has all five of their crossings that will be silent. Really excited about this project. GDOT is waiting on some funding, and we're waiting on them. All of the engineering has been done and completed. We expect, once we get this money, to be able to implement this project and finish this project within about three months. Our public safety, we had a $5 million allocation in our 2011 SPOST. Our public safety allocation helped us to build and complete a new police station this year. You can see the overhead. This is a police station that was designed to meet the needs of our community for the next 50 years, and we're, once again, really excited about this great public safety upgrade and quality of life upgrade in our city. The coming, this year, 2015, we've got three projects that we will start, that we haven't started yet. Blue Springs Road from Main Street, right by North Cobb High School, all the way out to 41, is going to be totally renovated. Taylor Street will be renovated. We have an allocation for Logan Farm Park, which is a total of a $2.5 million improvement. We've got $470,000 in SPOST 3, or 2011 SPOST, and then we have the balance of a $2 million allocation that has just been passed on November 4th with our SPOST 4 project. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, these are our projects. This is our update, and we are certainly proud to have the county as our partner and to have had the opportunity to have the joint projects and to be able to add these quality of life upgrades for the citizens of Cobb County. Thank you very much. I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you like to introduce your staff, Brian?
Absolutely, absolutely. We have our City Manager, Brian Bulltice, is here with us today, and our Assistant City Manager, Brandon Douglas, is here with us today, and our former Assistant City Manager is also here with us today, Mr. Benzner, and our former Alderman, Bob Weatherford. So we have quite, we have our staff all throughout the room.
Thank you, as always. Good job in the city of Acworth. Do any of y'all have any questions for Mayor Allagood? Yeah?
Please.
Yes, I was picking our Commissioner's ear over here, but was curious to know how you leverage the SPOST dollars with the silent crossings. Were they covered just with SPOST dollars in entirety, or did you get other funding sources?
That's a great question. We had in place, going back to the Tom Price era, we actually had a federal grant and an allocation that basically, we were able to transfer that allocation to the state and actually work through the state to create a grant, and so we used dollars from SPOST to access that through the state. So it's through the Georgia Department of Transportation.
Interesting. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Good question. Anything else? Thank you, Commissioners. Pleasure to be here today.
And I see Mr. Reed is here from property manager.
Yes, Commissioners, I will be reporting on the facilities, and the first picture you see there is the Health Department Annex. That used to be the Juvenile Court Facility, and you see them putting in cabinetry. This slide shows the whole 2011 SPOST, 18.1 million we have, and this shows how it's broken up into those categories of public safety, other facilities, public health, judicial facilities, senior services, and the libraries. On the right-hand side there, you see the original project schedule. At this point in time, we had expected to have 73 projects complete. We actually now have 103 complete. We expected to have nine underway. We have 12 underway, and we have exactly five in design as we had planned. We're well ahead of schedule, and we're wrapping up the last year of our SPOST work. Next slide, please. This picture, we're gonna show some highlights of some projects that are underway, as well as a couple pictures this time of some things that we're gonna be doing in the next few months. Can you go back to that one? That other one is the getting ready, put in the ceiling tile at the Public Health Facility. The next one is, this is one of the two driver's license facilities, and now the SPOST funds a portion of it, and a portion of it was funded in another way, but those buildings are gonna be, one is in Kennesaw at the Northwest Treatment Center, Water Treatment Center by Kenworth Park, and the other is on County Services Parkway, but these facilities will each have 30 units wide serving counter to serve the public. So this is hopefully gonna reduce lines, and people will be able to get their driver's licenses more quickly. But as you can see, the steel is going up. Next slide shows the County Services one, and steel going up. By the way, the roof is on that one at this time. Next one, please. This is one of the ones that we're gonna be doing over the next quarter. That's the Smyrna Health Facility. That facility has wood doors, which are pretty deteriorated. That one has a lot of paint on it to make it look that good, but we're gonna be replacing those with storefront doors. Next slide. This is the replacement of the heating and air conditioning underway at the former satellite office over there out west, and as you can see, it looks like a bunch of crumpled up metal there, but what you see in the foreground are cages, and we're putting the anti-theft cages on those two units. They're not real big units, they're like you would have at your home, and that will prevent them from being stolen. Next slide, please. This is a picture of a 30-year-old air handling unit in the public safety building. We're gonna be replacing these over the next quarter. And this is the work that is planned for the next quarter for judicial. We continue with the design of the magistrate court and the public safety HBAC replacement. For the libraries, we're doing landscaping at Vining's Library. Continue the renovation with the Health Department. We're gonna go into the headquarters building in another month and start that one, as this annex is near complete. The door replacement at Smyrna Health. For DOT, we're doing some heating and air conditioning replacement, as well as the same thing at the major senior centers, and then the driver's licenses, we'll continue working with those buildings. And the former purchasing building, which is now occupied by parks, will be replacing the windows with more energy-efficient units. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager. Good thing about public safety, we're 85 percent complete. All of our projects are underway at this point, and so what we are working on, the last few items, the four engines, the last four engines we'll receive off of this SPOST should be here March of 2015, and that will be a total of seven engines that were purchased somewhere in the neighborhood of half a million dollars each. On our Hazmat 22, this was a truck that's built by Hackney VT, coming to the board tonight for final finance approval on that, and then once that is done, we will hope to take delivery of that in October of 2015. And then on our thermal imaging cameras, we have received our first delivery and are in the process of getting these out into the field, and just wanted to bring the one to show you how small they've become. Used to, they were huge monsters to carry around. Now they're truly handheld, and keep in mind, we not only use this for firefighters who can see through the smoke, but it's also good for hazardous materials. You can look at canisters or barrels to see how much fluid or product is in a canister. We can use them with the police department for people who may have fled to the woods, and we can scan the woods with these, as well as an accident where a person may have been thrown from the vehicle. We can use these to scan the woods to see if there's other bodies around. So they're very versatile, and we had anticipated they would come in at $10,000. Technology usually drives the price higher, but in this case, we were able to get these at $7,000 each. So we will purchase 60 of those for the fire trucks. And then our next quarter is just to take delivery of the engines and the Hazmat truck in October, and then like I say, the thermal imaging cameras are being placed on the trucks as we speak today. So that brings my report to an end. Any questions? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Manager. Today, we're gonna talk a little bit about some finished projects. As you know, as y'all travel through the county, our park system has a lot of construction going on. It is without a doubt one of the busiest times ever in our park system for construction. Associations have been wonderful, the support that we've got from them, having to change their seasons and those type of things have been wonderful. We've worked hand-in-hand partnerships. Also, our team headed up by Tom Bills and Russell Small from Moreland, out to Bally. Moreland folks are here today. They've done a super, super job keeping us on track and keeping us going. This first picture that you see, we're gonna talk a little bit more about it into the slide presentation, but it is Wild Horse Creek Park, the new outdoor aquatic center next to the Ron Anderson Recreation Center. Next slide is how our money was divided up. You've seen this slide many times over the last few years, so it just kinda shows you where our money will be going. Next slide is where we're at in our process. 35 percent of projects completed, 41 percent underway, 21 percent still under design and engineering, and future projects, 3 percent. So we're getting there. Remember, ours is a little different, because we have to play around seasons, and we're not talking about spring, fall, and those type of seasons, but we're talking about the different ball seasons. So it's taken us a little longer than others, but we're getting there and have made a tremendous difference. The next few slides, or this next slide just shows you where projects are located throughout the county and their state that they are in at this time. The next few slides, we're gonna talk a little bit about some projects. We haven't shown a whole lot of these slides in the past, but we're kinda gonna let you know where we're at and let you have a view of some of the new stuff we're doing. Total budget for Al Bishop is almost $2 million. We're putting a new concession restroom press box there. You can see that in the bottom slide. You can see the before, and you can see the after. We've renovated the fields, new irrigation, field lighting fixtures, fencing and netting, laser playing the fields. We're about 85 percent complete, and we repaved the parking lot. We plan on starting our season the 1st of April here at Al Bishop. As you know, Al Bishop, this is another picture of field renovation. As you know, Al Bishop is one of the top softball complexes in the country, so we've got a lot of folks looking forward to coming back and playing there. Next project is Kenworth Park. If you've been up to Kenworth Park in the last month, you would've think a bomb landed there, but the difference we're making in that park is amazing. It was built in the early, early 70s, and it needed some tender loving care. You see a new concession restroom building here and a storage building for the association. You also see irrigation going in, and you see its purple pipe. That purple pipe says it's reclaimed water. Working with Steve McCullers and the water system, we're actually gonna irrigate with reclaimed water there, and that'll make a huge difference at Kenworth Park. Next is Kenworth Tennis Center. That's completed. It's actually operating. Everyone loves it. It's made a huge difference in that park. The next, you see the new parking lot. The mayor actually mentioned that in his presentation. That was a joint project between us and the city. Next is Ryan Park Development. Ryan Park was one of those parks that were built in the early 70s, had a major, major cross-tie wall. You see the new wall there. We actually built a bigger wall there that would help us, give us more room for the association. It's made a huge difference in what they'll be able to do and what they'll be able to offer for the girls' softball program, but it has new lighting poles, new fencing, laser graded the fields, new irrigation. Major water line was put in this park, I believe the next slide, I believe, shows me that. Yeah, this is the water line that actually is going down the bed of the creek, and so they've got the creek repiped, and they're putting it in, putting it in concrete, and then they'll put the water, the water will come back in the creek and fill it back over. So that's been quite a project for us also. This park gets used a whole lot, and the renovation's gonna make a huge difference. Next is Hyde Farm. Everybody's really been waiting a long time for this. This is a before and after picture. This is one of the buildings that we're totally taking down by hand and put back as it was first built, when it was new. Pretty amazing. 11 outbuildings, the house and the barn were about 75 percent complete there. Once we're complete with this construction, we'll start on the terraces in the field, in the farm fields, and my prediction is hopefully by next spring, we'll be operating that facility. But it's pretty amazing what's gone on there, so. Next picture shows you a few more of the gear house. We also did some surveys and some test pits out there to see if there was anything that we were missing, and so it helped us. We knew that there was an old kitchen house behind the house, and that's what you see, the little flags and stuff, so we found out where that was also. Next is Shaw Park. Shaw Park is another one of those parks that were built in the early 70s. A lot of ADA issues at Shaw Park that we were able to go in and make improvements with the SPOST. We also replaced some concession restroom buildings, worked on the ball fields, and major cross-tie walls throughout that park, we were able to replace. We'll be ready for opening day. This is another park of, a picture of Shaw Park also. Next is Noonday Park. This is our Eastern Zone Office. If you've ever been up there, it was in an old ranch-style house, probably 60s probably. It's done its job for us, and it's time for a new facility. We're actually building offices, and we'll also have a great meeting room up there. This part of the county, there's not a lot of meeting space. We're actually putting a meeting room in this facility that our associations and public meetings can be housed there. Next is Wallace Park. You've heard me talk a lot about Wallace Park through this whole thing. I am, there's a couple reasons I'm so proud of Wallace Park. Number one is our staff had a lot to do. We did this a lot, our own staff did this. We rebuilt the fields, we did fencing, we did buildings, we did a whole lot of stuff here. But what we did here is we made a difference in a community. We went back in and reclaimed this park. It's amazing the difference it has already made. They played football there this past fall, and it's amazing, their program, they were so excited, they couldn't believe the new buildings, the new field conditions. We've really made a difference in this part of the county with this project. You see the new playground that went in, you see all the ramping. There was a lot of ADA issues here also that we had to correct, and we were able to do that. Next is Wild Horse Creek Park. This is the pool, we're actually closing the pool at Powder Springs Park, and actually moving that, or putting, building a new facility at Wild Horse. This will be an outdoor water park. You can see right to the left, on the bottom photo, to the left of the Recreation Center, you can see the building, that's the white building you see there, and then you can see the pool concrete that's already been poured there. Y'all, this is gonna be amazing when this is finished. Kids are gonna be able to walk to this facility. We already have a huge summer program at this facility. You can only imagine what's gonna happen when this facility opens, and it will be open this summer. That's another shot of the pool, shot of the Recreation Center, and what you see up that top right-hand corner, that's kind of the lazy river. You'll be able to get in that, and the current will push you downstream, so excited about this facility. Recently started projects, the Fair Oaks Recreation Center, theater roof, Hyde Farm, and various paving projects throughout the county. Construction, Milford Park, that's another one if you go by, don't let it scare you. Yes, it looks like something landed there, but it will be put back together. What a huge difference it's gonna make on that corner there at Milford Park. Fair Oaks, Sloss Mountain Park, Trey Moore, Jim Miller Park, construction is going on there, South Cobb, and then Cobblestone Golf Course paving. You've seen this slide many times, the impacts that we're gonna have through the SPOST, air quality in our aquatic centers, cross-tie wall replacements, ball field lighting, current code stuff that we're meeting now is fire protection, ADA, which is a huge deal for us in the park system, electrical upgrades, usability and experience, new concession restrooms that had just been outdated, we're able to replace, new scoreboards, and serving new and growing user groups. That's our presentation. Any questions? Anything? Okay.
Eddie?
Yes?
What I'd like you to do is tell the Commissioners where some of the materials that are being put up at Hyde Farm came from.
The school system bought some property along Terrell Mill Road, and it had three barns actually on it. So we took our, the folks that are doing our construction over Hyde, over to look at those, and we were able to take some of those resources from those three barns and use at Hyde Farm. The school system, we're great partners in that and let us do that, so great partnership. Commissioner and Mr. Hankerson both let us, helped us make, made that happen. Good?
Presentation, and the thing that I like the best is that you can see that there are parks throughout the county.
Yes.
It's not just one area or one district. I mean, this is a great project list of, that covers everybody's district and everybody's special park and facility.
We're making a huge difference in the county. It really is.
The meeting room at Noonday Creek? How big is it gonna be?
It will be compared to, compared to our training room.
Well, is it big enough for me to have a town hall on that side of town?
It would be.
Thank you. I won't have to wait for the expansion of Gritters Library.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So if you recall, the 2011 SPOST transportation breakout focused heavily on infrastructure preservation, followed by safety and operational improvements, congestion relief, traffic management, and transit investments throughout the county. Of 189 transportation projects, I'm very pleased to report, if you notice the bars to the right of the screen that report on actual and planned, we are ahead of schedule in terms of completed projects and are continuing to move projects actively through design, engineering, and construction. Transportation active project status currently, there are 46 projects in pre-construction, 22 projects in construction, and as we've stated previously, we've completed 111 projects as of the end of 2014. Again, you can see those projects are spread throughout the county. So we wanted to highlight a couple of projects. Shiloh Schallerford Road improvements, this was a safety and operational improvements project between Canton Road and Wade Green Road. It included a center turn lane, additional right turn lanes, increased capacity at the intersections, bike-friendly lanes and sidewalks. The construction cost was $11 million, and the project was substantially complete in November of 2014. Pine Mountain Road included improvements from Stilesboro Road to just east of Schilling's Road, includes site and distance enhancements, widening travel lanes to standard widths, addition of curb, gutter, and sidewalk, the addition of turn lanes. The addition of turn lanes at major intersections. And the contract amount was three point nine million. And the notice to proceed for construction on this project was issued this month in January of 2015. Floyd Road, improvements from Veterans Memorial Highway to Clay Road. Four lanes with a divided median, multi-use trail on the west side, sidewalk on the east side. And construct dual left turn lanes from Floyd Road onto Veterans Memorial Highway. This is a four point eight million dollar project. Notice to proceed was issued in January of 2015. And you can see it's going to have a, just over a year, about a year and a half's construction period. So in the 2011 sploßed, and this is one of the parts of the sploßed that we are most proud of. As you recall from that very first slide where we talked about the relative amounts of investment that were made in transportation. The sploßed infrastructure preservation was key and the resurfacing of roads throughout the county has been both extremely popular and much, much needed. So the 2011 sploßed resurfacing through December of 2014, we bid thirteen contracts valued at sixty-four point six million. Including one thousand and fifty-four roads and three hundred and twenty-six miles. Resurfacing contracts that we've awarded since October of 2011. That includes three two thousand five sploßed contracts, sixteen contracts at seventy-six point three million. One thousand two hundred fifty-seven roads and three hundred and ninety miles of resurfaced roadway. Our next quarter planned activities, we have eight projects that should be completed. That includes three sidewalk projects and five drainage projects. Eight construction starts with two drainage projects, two resurfacing, two sidewalk and two intersection projects. And I should mention, we really are making great headway on the sidewalk improvements throughout the county. As you, many of you know, I know Commissioner Cupid especially knows this because we have a lot of requests for sidewalk. Not just in her district, we currently have a backlog of over a thousand requests for sidewalks throughout the county. So very popular projects as well. We have four design and engineering starts that will begin this next quarter, including a drainage project, two sidewalk projects and one roadway project. With that, any questions or comments? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I apologize to the board first for being late and to staff second for being late and to our guests who are here presenting for being late. I apologize to y'all. What have we covered so far? So let's go back to tab one, is that okay? For the group? Community development, receive a presentation from the Community Development Agency concerning the Dobbins Air Reserve Base Joint Land Use Study. Mr. Johnson?
Good afternoon Chairman Commissioners. My name is Dana Johnson with the Community Development Agency. And we are here to give the final presentation on the Dobbins Joint Land Use Study. This has been a, a very detailed process in a timeframe that was challenging to staff. And challenging to our, our consultants with Matrix Design Group. But in the end, we came out with an excellent product in my opinion that shows the full coordination that happened between the partners involved in this particular initiative. The city, the reason why we are pursuing this particular initiative is, is very clear. Dobbins Air Reserve Base is a very important resource and asset that we have in Cobb County. It, to, to current figures show that the economic impact of Dobbins Air Reserve Base is about one hundred and sixty-four million dollars in two thousand and fifteen. So, two thousand and fourteen, excuse me. So this is a very important resource that we have, they're an important part of our community. And the whole purpose of this joint land use study was to make sure that we were doing our parts. City of Marietta, City of Smyrna, Dobbins Air Reserve Base in Cobb County, working together. So that what we're coordinating and ensuring that decisions that we're being, that are being made are not having a negative impact on each other. So that as missions change for Dobbins, that they're thinking about the impact that can have on the community and vice versa. As, as the Board of Commissioners or city councils are making decisions on land uses around the base. To get a good understanding and basis of knowledge and how that could impact flight operations and military preparedness that is occurring at Dobbins. So with that, I would like to invite Mike Rapala up with Matrix Design Group, who's going to go over the presentation. And then at the end, we will come back and see if there's any questions that you have for staff or, or for consultants. So Mike, thank you, sir.
Good afternoon Chairman, Commissioners and County Manager. On behalf of Matrix Design Group and our project manager, Ms. Les Warner, who was called back to corporate headquarters by our CEO today. It has been a privilege to be your partner in this endeavor. Matrix had the opportunity to help facilitate a very successful collaborative effort between the county, the cities and the installation. To address the items that Dana mentioned. And as to look at compatibility into the future and to be able to provide a balanced approach as the community works with the installation. In the next number of years. What I'd like to do is spend a few minutes kind of going over the process and then highlight some of the, the major items that are incorporated in the joint land use study. It's very important, it starts out with the fact that it's a collaborative process and we have a lot of stakeholders. And it's important that when we look at the approach, we're looking at stakeholders, not only our elected officials and the agencies. But the public and the individual person that's part of the community. It's also important that it's a set of recommendations. It's a guideline. It's like a playbook for the communities and the stakeholders moving forward. It's also important, we've emphasized this with, especially with the public, that the joint land use study is not a regulatory document. It's not an enforceable action. It is a game plan to move forward and each of those actions have to be brought into the different jurisdictions on how they want to go forward and implement those. It requires the stake, the support of the stakeholders and the public as we move forward through the implementation phase. Our approach was to look at the different items out there and try to focus as best we can to a very specific geography. Because we don't want to look at things in a broad context, if not necessarily. We really want to be able to, to develop the relationship between the influence and the effects of the military operation. And the relationship to the citizens and the quality of life of the, the community. We want to minimize any controls or policies. And we want to link the solution set to tools that can be effective and useful to the different jurisdictions. The key is to develop a game plan, is the implementation strategy for preventing and mitigating encroachment. Mitigation is a difficult component. The biggest bang for the buck is prevention, to take the areas that you're currently compatible and to ensure that compatibility exists into the future. As I mentioned, the public is a key component. And we've had three workshops in which during different phases of the joint land use process that we engage the public to provide inputs on what they thought the concerns and issues were. How we develop some of the issues in our approaches moving forward. And then the draft document in which we are looking for them to also comment on the approaches moving forward. We had a website that was also available to the public to be able to communicate and receive information through that process. And as I mentioned, there was a public review in January twenty-second where we engaged the public on the draft documents. The, the JLUSS is combined of two, two documents. The one document is the background report. It's basically a very technically oriented document. It addresses those five major sections in there. It gives the readers the background, the understanding of the community, the military mission, the kind of tools that you already have in place and that are using. And then looking at where the potential issues and areas of focus that we need to address through the committees. The report is a smaller version of it. And in that report, it provides the first couple of items is a summary of what's in the technical report to give you an overview. And then the, the main meat of the JLUSS report is that implementation plan, that recommendations. It's the playbook, not only for the region, but it's an individual playbook for each of the stakeholders. The county, the cities and the installation. This is the overall process. You can see we're fairly along the process. As I mentioned, the public review had taken place. We're still in the final phases of the opportunity for the public to submit written comments to Dana or through the website. And then we'll produce a final JLUSS documentation for review and, and adoption by the JLUSS committee. And then the follow-on action there is for the different jurisdictions to accept the JLUSS report into their communities. What we identified was forty-five compatibility issues across twenty-four different compatibility factors. And not all factors were identified in our research with the community and the installation. This is a summary of where the majority of the issues were identified. With communications, land, land use, noise, light and glare, safety and vertical, where the main thrust of the document is moved forward. We also had some guidelines that we were working forward to and it was very important that we respect property rights. The individual property rights, not only of the individuals but businesses. And again, as I mentioned, we wanted to really direct specific geographies to solve the problems. So we really wanted to, to spend time to ensure we had the relationship between what kind of effect there was and the geography that we're going to focus on our strategy against. We developed eighty-one strategies to address military operations impacting the local communities. And also any activities that might have an impact to the military mission. As I mentioned, geography is very important. So one of the elements that we are developing is the military compatibility influence area. It's kind of an overlay and within that overlay, there are several sub areas. And is again emphasizing the fact, we only wanted to focus certain actions where the most important impacts were. And so those sub areas are within the overall overlay area. And they are focused specifically on safety, noise, light, vertical obstructions and BASH, which is bird airstrike hazard component. A picture's worth a thousand words and here's our picture. It's a very somewhat of a complex picture here, but it's made up, as I mentioned, of several components. If you look at the insert up there, you'll see the broad purple outline is reflection of what we're calling the compatibility influence area. It's inclusive of several sub areas of it. One of them is the approach and departure corridors for the installation. The blue squiggly lines in there are reflective of the noise contours. And around the, the runway, you'll see the boxes that go off the ends of the runway. These are the safety zone, the clear and the accident potential zones one and two. And then the broad circle there is the BASH area. It's five nautical miles around the airfield. So those are the different layers that combine focus the geography where a number of our strategies are targeted. This is again example of looking at the light and glare, which is the rectangular aspect that you see. In relation to the approach and departure corridors that you see in yellow and kind of red. Some of the key strategies here are listed on the slide. I'm not going to go through all of them, but they deal with taking the situation where you're currently communicating and enhancing that communication. Or institutionalizing that communication, getting away from it being personal or ad hoc and putting it into some format. So it can sustain itself beyond the existing individuals. The other part of it is that we look where there were ability to create new links of communication between the different stakeholders. And getting people that normally have not talked to them because there's no commonality. We've created the commonality of information that now through a communication process can take place. And when we talk about compatibility, there's really five areas of compatibility. It starts off with information. If you have information, you could start to address compatibility. The second one is communication, knowing who to talk to, when to talk to and how to talk to them. The third is a communication process. And eighty-five percent of compatibility can be attained by having information, somebody to talk to and a means to do it through a coordination. The last two are policies and regulatory. And the goal here is to try to achieve as much of compatibility as we can without going to regulatory and policies. In this case, one of the key elements is to continue from the planning element, which is developing the implementation plan. And continuing into the implementation by establishing a coordination committee. That will carry the implementation plan that's in the JLUSS today and work with the different communities and stakeholders and make it a reality. In land use, there's a number of elements in there and the action really is to take these different recommendations or pieces of information of impacts and concerns. And start to update your comprehensive plans and zoning ordinance. To take the key elements that are in the military compatibility influence zone in the sub areas. And this is one of the elements that we talk about when we talk with the public. This is the implementation and these have to go back to the individual jurisdictions and have them work it through their process. That the JLUSS committee and the JLUSS process doesn't dictate it. It's still your community that has to take those actions. Terms of light and glare, we want to consider dark sky ordinance to reduce light pollution that benefits not only the military operations. But also the quality of life for the community as a whole. And then when we're talking about noise, again, we're talking about quality of life. And we're, we're also looking for the state to adopt real estate disclosures. So that the individuals, the individual homeowners, the public out there is more aware and cognizant of the potential for noise. Not that noise is bad, but it's better to know it and understand it when they make their decisions. Safety zones, this is very important. We want to make sure that we can take care of land acquisitions in the clear zone. The reason why the word is clear is it shouldn't, there shouldn't be anything in there. No humans, no structures, whatever, because it has the highest potential for aircraft accidents. And so it's becoming upon the community, the government and the, the military to ensure that air operations can be conducted safely with the reduced risk to your citizens. Vertical obstructions, this has an impact to flight operations. What we're trying to do is to ensure that the type of operations around Dobbins Air Force Base can be conducted safely. It's also the important to understand that we have three types of aviation assets there. We have large fixed wing aircraft. We also have rotor aircraft that the guard and reserves use. And then we have all types of aircraft associated with Lockheed Martin. So as an installation, we had to ensure that all the potential vertical hazards can be minimized today and into the future. So what are the next steps? I'll turn it back over to Dana.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioners, the, the next steps in this process is we are, we have the draft document. Again, as, as you had previously heard, our public review period is open until February eleventh. So we, we asked the community if you have any comments supportive or, or some, some concerns with anything in the document. We ask you to please let us know. We did receive a lot of great information at the last public meeting. I think on average, we, I think there were about a hundred and fifty-ish people who participated throughout this process. We're averaging about fifty to sixty people per meeting showing up, which we're very happy about. After the public review period closes, we will make final amendments to the document, pass it out to everybody. I don't anticipate there being large changes, but we might get more comments after this hearing that we are not aware of. But we, based on what we received so far, we don't anticipate any large structural changes unless that were to happen. If the document, and there's not any major changes, we will bring this forward for consideration by the Board of Commissioners in February, February twenty-fourth. If the Board of Commissioners approves this document on February twenty-fourth, we will then work with the city councils, with Smyrna and Marietta. In order to bring this forward for their consideration. Probably in February, we will also be doing the work sessions with the cities. So they are receiving the same presentation that you are receiving today. We're just trying to make sure that all of our elected officials who need to make a decision on this important matter are fully aware of what's going on, what's up to date. And, and how the process is moving forward. And with that, either, either Mike or I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have about this document or draft report. And we appreciate all that you've done to help us in this regard.
Thank you very much and appreciate very much Dana, your leadership in this important project. Commissioners, as you know, this has come to us several times in different stages we get there. And it's been a tremendous effort. get here, and it's been a tremendous effort to get it this morning. The folks in the feds were here this morning and indicated that this is one of the most aggressive schedules and well-thought-out processes that we've, that they have encountered, and so it's a reflection well on us. I'd like to thank clearly the city Marietta, Mayor Tomlin, and the staff that's here, Bill Bruton, city manager for being here, thank you. City of Smyrna has been a part of this as well, and I see that Mayor Proton Pritchett is here today. We appreciate you so very much. And Dobbins has been and always has been a collective asset to our community, not only as an economic driver, but as a home to so many men and women that serve overseas to make sure that we have the opportunity to do exactly what we're doing today, which is collect freely without threat of, actually without threat of harm and the freedom to do what we're doing. We appreciate the leadership of the base in making that happen, specifically Colonel Irvin. We appreciate you being here with us again today and your staff for being a part of this group. You know Cobb County, the cities and the citizens of Cobb County appreciate what you and your team do for this country and more specifically for our county. We appreciate you very much, and the men and women that, from your operation that are serving overseas, we hold them dear to our heart and in our prayers and thoughts and stand ready to assist our families in any way possible who stand back here in anticipation of their return. So we appreciate you so very much, what you've done. This effort we've taken on is very important to the future of that base. That base is very important to the future of Cobb County, and we understand that, and that's why we took this project on. There's, moving forward, once we've gone through a lot of the steps that Dana has talked to, some of the things we will be doing is putting an implementation oversight committee. No, we have a report that's going to ask for recommendation, assuming this is adopted by everyone, we're going to put a team together to make sure that we're moving on it and it doesn't become a plan that collects dust on the shelf. And of course, that committee will make annual reports back to the board of commissioners and any city council that requests it. We noticed recently that there's part of the actual area that's of consideration and importance to us to look at, falls into the cities and Fulton County. Once this report is done, we don't have jurisdiction, obviously, but we'll take this report data to them for their consideration to implement a program on their behalf, on their, from their perspective, hopefully to, that complements what we've done. And then we also anticipate taking that report and sending it to our legislators, both locally and federally, so they're aware of what we're doing as well. And we'll continue to move forward and make the changes and adjustments that we need to do in our plan documents so that we could be as cooperative as possible. It was noted to me in one of the meetings that we were in that across this country, this process is done, very rarely is it done as quickly and as thoroughly as we have done it, and the cooperation is what's contributed to that success, and I appreciate that. There's also across this community, or across this country, communities that have done this study and they let us sit on the shelf, and it's had a negative long-term effect on our base, and we're not going to let that happen here in Cobb County. So I want to thank everyone involved for making this happening. I appreciate it. We look forward to the final report and moving forward on its recommendations to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can. The one thing, just for folks that wasn't mentioned, is that this report will demonstrate clearly that the development down associated with SunTrust Park is outside of the area of concern, and as a result, that project is not necessarily influencing what's within this report. Are there any other comment or questions, Commissioner Rod?
First off, I just wanted to add my thanks, Dana, to you and your staff, and also to all the members of the committee that spent a lot of time working on this. You did answer my one question I was going to ask about the Fulton County part, the little squig line. The other thing I wanted to mention was Dana and I met and talked about this yesterday, and shortly after I met with some developers for land that was in this area, and we actually had the discussion, and I was able to refer to the various things, the noise and the building height, so that when they were looking at what the future redevelopment of their property could be, you know, I told them that these would be some of the things that we would be looking at. So we've already got a chance to use it, so thanks.
Perfect. Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you. Yes, I would like to echo too the thank yous to the committee and Matrix and you and your staff, Dana, always a great job. I attended the majority of the open house meetings, and they were very well attended, and we actually got some really good feedback and input from citizens, which is why we do open houses, to get that kind of input. So I would just say congratulations and good job, and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, also to echo the sentiments of the other commissioners, I was absolutely blown away by the work product that was shared with us. It was one thing to talk about what could come out of this study, but to actually see all the recommendations and to see how well-rounded they were, not just to emphasize the technical aspects of it and the infrastructure, but to also spend similar amounts of time talking about the community impact and various areas for us to consider. I just want to share with all of you that worked on this, you guys had a job well done here, and I think this is a document that all of us will be able to refer to as we're making decisions today. Thank you.
And hiring Matrix was a great recommendation, Dana, so thank you for your team in that. They did a great job as well.
I agree, sir. And if I can, I want to thank Celeste, Mike, and Patrick, who are the three individuals who dealt with us the most for Matrix. We're very pleased with their, with their work product. I want to thank Kiran for all her work and support and helping us with this process, and obviously all of our partners with Dobbins, Marietta, and Smyrna. I want to echo what you all have said and just thank them for helping us be successful in this.
Terrific. We look forward to your final report. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's going to take us back to tab two, item two to authorize, well, actually to authorize, but we want to get a report from Garrett, McNatt, Hennessy, and Carpenter, it's three sixty, Al, C.C., to present an update on state and federal legislative consulting activities by the firm on behalf of the county. Who is going to lead? Good morning, sir.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon. And I think it's a slight presentation from four of us, if you don't mind. Here are a couple of handouts.
We'll need your name for the record, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Heath Garrett, managing partner for Garrett, McNatt, Hennessy, and Carpenter Law Firm. It's a pleasure, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, to be before you today. Happy New Year. We are a full-service law and government relations firm based here in Cobb County. It's really a pleasure to be home today. As many of you know, I've probably spent the better part of the last twenty-four months traveling around the southeast and actually the whole nation, and I wouldn't, I'd be remiss if I didn't take for a second the opportunity to remind us that we don't want to take for granted the county that we live in, the cities that we get to operate with, because in my job and what we do, we work with a lot of cities and a lot of counties, a lot of state and government and federal elected officials. But it really is true, when you get outside of Cobb County, you recognize how fortunate we are to be governed by folks like you, but also to be served and managed by folks like those making the presentation today. And it really is true, we don't, it's not just public relations and marketing on our behalf, that we do, are fortunate to live in one of the best-run and best-governed counties, not only in the southeast, but in the nation, and we're recognized as such by elected officials around the country. Our reputation is strong, our brand is strong among not just other county officials, but folks around the nation. When you all brought us on a few months ago to begin the professional services of government relations, I oftentimes remind, when I talk to folks about this, that we are in the government relations and advocacy business. Everybody is, elected officials, state and local governments, and oftentimes remind my minister and our local publisher that the right to petition your government is right there in the First Amendment, right next to freedom of religion and the freedom of the press. And so we're not, we should not be ashamed that we're engaged in the government relations process on behalf of our clients legally and otherwise, and it's something that we are excited and a service that we're glad to provide for our home county. It is, when we began the process, we knew that the county had previously had professional services here, but that had lapsed for a number of years, and we thought that it would be good to take our time to listen to you, the elected officials, many of the folks in the different departments, and we began an arduous process, it's not yet complete yet, of what we call an audit of elected officials that serve Cobb County at the state and the federal level, their staffs, of you and of the staff here in Cobb County, to listen and to learn and to figure out how we can better organize and prioritize the representation of the county's needs. As you know, we are a large county, a very diverse county, and our economic interest in all the things that we do, we're obviously a huge center for business, and we have a lot, we're obviously being the most affluent, educated county in metro area. There are a lot of things we can do. There are so many opportunities, and we've been listening for the last six months, and what we presented to you today is a, it's a combination of priorities that we've distilled up from you and from the folks that work with you. I will say as a generalization, that as we've talked to state-elected officials, their staffs, federal-elected officials, that we can, as a preliminary report, report back that our brand among those elected officials is really strong and positive, and that's good. There are a lot of maybe counties and other municipalities that would prefer to be in our position when it comes to that. But one of the things we've also discovered is that because we're such a large county, because we have so many strong voices out there, one of the constructive requests, as we've talked to those folks, is to see if we can find a way to provide a greater organization and prioritization for the things we're asking for. And that's a challenge for all really large counties and really large organizations when you have so many people and things to do, but that's one of the things that we're going to continue to work for. We are continuing to meet, we obviously have follow-up meetings with each of you over the next few months, we need to do. And as a reminder, this process is a dynamic process rather than a static process. These priorities will change as your priorities change, as the priorities of the people of Cobb County change, and you present those to us. And so we both work on the offense in the sense of promoting the legislative agendas that you have at the state and the federal level, but at the same point in time, we have to, we represent you, and we oftentimes have to play defense. There are a lot of folks out there around the state and around the country that have good intentions, but may not under-recognize the unintended consequences of what their legislation they're proposing may have for the county and for the citizens of Cobb, and so we will be dynamic in helping to represent you in that regard. I'm pleased that our firm partners are made up of individuals who have served at the highest levels of local, state, and federal government around, around the country. We have three of our partners here today I'd like to introduce to you. We have Mitch Hunter, the former chief of staff for Congressman Phil Gingrich, and an advisor to many of the state's elected officials over the past decade and a half, and a great partner of ours at the federal and the state level. We have Chuck Clay, many of you know Chuck, he used to serve this distinguished body and is here with us today. We'll be hearing from Chuck in just a second. And also want to introduce Heather McNatt Hennessy. Heather is the former chief of staff for Jack Kingston and resides in Washington, DC. We do have a Washington, an office here and an office in Washington, DC to serve you better. So without further ado, I'd like to call up Chuck Clay to give us a report on the state legislature and discuss our state priorities you have before you.
Again, thank you, guys. I would also be remiss if I didn't say, first, Chuck Clay, in a partnership here with the three sixty group, which is a fine group of folks. My focus will primarily be on the state legislative side, which is where the fundamental focus of my background has been. But again, having been a, having started at the lowest rung you can start in the legal community, which is running traffic court in Cobb County in nineteen seventy-eight, I'm not sure that I have risen on the ladder, but at least have gone parallel over the last thirty-five years. So it is, it's an honor and privilege to be here. I also know at a certain time of day, less can be better, so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time sort of getting into weeds on issues unless you want to address or talk to me directly about them. We have distributed what was a starting list of priorities, and some of them are the macro thirty-thousand-foot transportation funding. Yes, is transportation a key issue? Yes. Is there some discussion and hopefully likelihood, knock on wood, that there might be some action by the General Assembly this year to not just have a revenue-neutral bill, but actually to enhance dollars in the transportation slash transit slash infrastructure arena? Because as you all have read and know, we're about a one-point-five-billion-dollar shortfall every year in just maintaining what we have. In a community like Cobb, that has been so far ahead of the curve in many cases because of the wise investment of you guys and your predecessors in infrastructure, you know, Cobb has continued to be a top destination for business and families. Georgia needs to do the same. Some of them are a little closer. There's a request for a technology fee. We'll be talking to your local legislation to help impose a, by local legislation, a fee to pay for the technology that your courthouse needs, both in terms of security, efficiency, and simple justice, and be looking at those types of issues. Education, capping the QBE fair share, something that Cobb County's always supported, you know, I put in legislation on that ten, fifteen years ago. I'm not sure that the likelihood it'll fare any better today than it did tomorrow, but, but I do think this governor is very sincere on his, on his education revision committee that he's putting together, much like you just heard from Matrix, to come back with some mandatory recommendations. Doesn't directly impact the county commission, but that which reduces the pressure on QBE and fair share funding is not only good for education, it's good for the taxpayers and homeowners in this community, and you all know that, and we support those kinds of efforts in any way we can. One of the things I always try to say, and you all know this, but while having maybe a short-lived career on the county commission, when I went to the General Assembly, one of the things that sort of struck me as being very different is the, the idea at one level, you need three votes, and the General Assembly level, you need either twenty-nine or ninety-one. That's not good or bad, but there's a little bit of a difference in how you politic, how you proceed, and the need, and yes, I'm honored to be here, but I also think if I wasn't here, you should have somebody representing you, because when you need to rally up twenty-nine votes or ninety-one votes, when you need to know who that chairman of the appropriations committee is, or the subcommittee on higher ed, which is Earl Harrah Hart right now, which has done great wonders for Cobb and the higher education system here, those things are not as easy to do as walk down the hall, and it is important. It is important that you have some level of both continuity, yes, relationships, it's not magic, in many cases, it's information, but if you're not there, if you don't have somebody day in and day out, I used to say as a legislator, there was plenty of folks that I could go out and buy me a hamburger for lunch. I didn't really need that. What I need is when I've got a complicated issue that's impacting my backyard, I want to be able to go to one person and get an answer. I may take five minutes, I may have to get back, but a person that I knew that at heart represented the interest of whether it be back, well, to take the entity, whether it be a Home Depot or Dobbins Air Reserve Base, or Cobb County Board of Commissioners, or, you know, the old Bell South years ago, it doesn't matter. I always respected those, one of them was one of your peers right now, who could bring you timely information when you needed it to make the best decision you could, day in and day out. So I wasn't wondering on a day-to-day basis, well, who do I go to for this? Who do I go to for that? And Heath is right, it's as much defense as offense. There's no magic thing overnight, though there's certainly any issue that are a priority to you will be a priority to me. But I do think it's important that you have that consistent voice, day in and out, year in and year out, and whether it be Commissioner Rod had mentioned, it's a library issue that I was not aware of, but we'll certainly go to bat on and see, that's just politics. I mean, and we need to correct the politics, and we'll do it any way we can. Some of that may involve you all coming down. I always say you only lobby as well as what you represent, and you all represent the best. So there may be times and places during the session, whether it be for a hearing or a meeting or just one-on-one, or if you even want to do so for your own issues and reasons and edification and just wanting to meet particular individuals, certainly let us know. But there may be times where the most critical thing is one, two, three, four, all of you come down and throw your weight and put a face on, it's not just Chuck Clay or Heath Garrett or Mitch talking, you've got the weight of a consensus of your county commission that represents the people of this community behind you too. Again, you've got this list in front of you. I won't belabor it other than to say I'm enthusiastic, I enjoy being an advocate, I like doing it as a prosecutor, I like doing it as a lobbyist, even like it even better when it's in my own backyard with people I know and respect in a community in which I live. So when I can be of assistance to any of you, we'll get weekly reports, they'll be disseminated to each and all of you. Questions come up, I do want to be your point, and anytime and place I can help any of you, from commission, county manager, staff, let me know, and it's an honor to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Welcome home.
Chairman, hi, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. My name is Heather McNatt Hennessy. I'm a partner at Garrett McNatt Hennessy and Carpenter. I was thrilled to be here and get to see the Dobbins presentation. That is certainly something that is critical to your federal affairs efforts, and as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, when that presentation is ready for prime time, will be part of that effort to get that presentation distributed to all of your federal affairs representatives. You do have some new members in Washington, so getting that in their hands and making sure that they're aware of all the issues that face the base is certainly on our list of things to... You do have some new members in Washington, so getting that in their hands and making sure that they're aware of all the issues that face the base is certainly on our list of things to do. The list that you have in front of you for your federal affairs is our best guess at what Congress is going to try to accomplish in the next six months. You note that Dobbins is not on there, going back to the defense versus offense theme that my colleagues have been presenting. BRAC is not currently being considered by Congress right this minute. The president will probably make the suggestion in his budget again. It's something that he's done several years in a row. It's a revenue raiser, so it's tempting for any president to include as many revenue raisers in their budget as they can find. That way, they get to put some negatives in the negative columns and then add pluses in the plus columns. We all heard the State of the Union address last week, which did include a lot of new initiatives with big price tags. So, BRAC is one of those initiatives that every president can repeatedly suggest, which requires congressional approval to become reality. But nevertheless, the president gets the benefit in his budget of having that suggested cut. Nevertheless, playing offense on BRAC right now is incredibly important so that when it does come around again, and it, and it may be a couple of years before it does, but when it does come around again, we are well positioned to play defense. So, this was very fortuitous that I got to be in the audience today. We'll certainly be watching as that comes back around. But to the more immediate issues at hand, Congress has got to reauthorize transportation funding. The Highway Trust Fund is going to run out of money in a few short months. They enacted a temporary plug in the last summer. That funding is going to fall short. It was a tax code change, which just provided several billion dollars to fund transportation funding. So, Congress has to act on that. Of course, Georgia has a tremendous amount at risk in any transportation debate because we are a donor state. And any transportation official around the state has to ride the waves of these funding shortfalls as Congress increasingly lets transportation funding get closer and closer to the cliff before they reauthorize it every time. You may remember last August, the Secretary of Transportation had actually sent out instructions for what would happen when the trust fund ran out of money. They were fully anticipating that Congress was not going to be able to get a bill enacted. So, tiptoeing closer and closer to that line at the federal level every time this comes around creates tremendous amount of uncertainty for all of you, tremendous amount of uncertainty for your staff, uncertainty for GDOT, and is a terrible situation all the way around. How they're going to fill the funding gap is, is very unclear. We've heard talk of gas tax increases. I think that's probably a pretty remote possibility. Some sort of additional changes to the tax code is probably more likely. That's a tempting way they can get three or four years of funding before they have to deal with this again. And with other tax code changes on the horizon, that's probably what they will choose to do. The second item on the list is municipal bond tax policies with Cobb County's stellar bond rating and all of the need that you have to be able to put forth bonds to finance projects. It's really critical that Congress doesn't change the tax code status of tax-exempt municipal bonds to make it more expensive for you to borrow money. And that's what this string of proposals would do in one form or another. The president's budget has suggested this, various high-ranking members of Congress have suggested this. It's very troubling. We're participating in a coalition, the Bonds Build America Coalition, which is a group of, you know, very high-ranking aviation experts, people who monitor building hospitals and other healthcare facilities that are bond-financed, other major infrastructure groups who are working to preserve that status of tax-exempt bonds so that the cost of borrowing money doesn't get more expensive for all of you. And then federal grant funding, to make sure that the county is able to tap into grant funding when you need to, and that the county really gets its fair share of federal funding, those grant pots have to be as healthy as possible. The sequester budget cuts, which, you know, we've all kind of put out of our minds because Congress took them away for two fiscal years, they're set to resurface again. And that's an issue for all domestic spending as well as defense spending. So, replacing those sequester cuts so that domestic and defense spending pots remain healthy, and so that when the county does need to apply for grants from HHS, or DOT, or some other federal agency where you are entitled to compete and you can put forth a compelling application, that you get your fair share of federal funding. And then finally, the Kennesaw Mountain Battlefield, to include the historic Wallace House, this is something that requires an act of Congress. It did make some progress last Congress, but unfortunately was not able to get across the finish line. So, that's something else that we hope to sort of push forward here in the first half of this year. So, any questions, we're happy to answer, and thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Mitch?
If we have any questions or comments on either the federal or state agenda, I guess I should introduce myself, Mitch Hunter. I am actually the, serve as the point of contact over both the state and federal lobbying efforts. And just if y'all have any comments or questions for the issues placed ahead on both the federal and state agenda?
Well, let me, let me say this first, and, and then thank you guys for being here and presenting this to us. I know you've done a lot of work getting to this point, background work. As was mentioned, my, Heath, we used to have federal representation back in 2009 and prior to that. We'd never really collect, had a collective thought process for the state. This board was, board was agreeable to appoint someone that could, and we actually went out to RFQ and RFP, whatever process we used to go out, to come up with a representation, and you guys are those folks, and we appreciate that. As Chuck will tell you, and as you folks should tell you, and as his board is aware, when you have this kind of fluid information going on where something can change 16 times between 10:00 AM and 3:00, 3:00 PM, it's important that as we try to coordinate where we stand in positions, that we have a flow of communication that's succinct. And to that point, we had asked for a point of contact, which is Mitch Hunter. So, Mitch will, will be that person. It's not to say that Chuck won't call me occasionally and say, I need to know what's going on with X, Y, and Z, and we can comment, I can comment to that. We've, Mr. Hankerson and myself are working as direct contacts with Mitch to help funnel information from the board to Mitch and to the state. Obviously, they're going to have open conversation and dialogue with the entire board, but in an attempt to help make sure that we're clear in how the direction is going, we felt that that was the best route to go. With that, that's why they're here. They're here to present what they've heard from all five commissioners. That should be some things that are considered this year. Doesn't mean things won't come up in three weeks, won't mean that something will fall off when it's made clear by the governor. I'm not touching that. In which case, we, we take it off our list and move to the next thing. So, we have to understand all that. And I see that somebody's presented a East Marietta Library, what? In a minute, in a minute. So, this kind of stuff, if the individual commissioners have got something they want promoted, it's got to flow through the county manager's office. If it, if it pertains to his budget and his staff and his resources, staff has got to get his okay and his consensus to bring it to me, to bring it to the board, to bring it to Mitch. It's only important that he be aware and be able to manage the resources that are coming and going as it relates to the things within budgets and his jurisdiction. So, I say that out of clarity so that we make sure that when Mitch goes down and tells Chuck to go do this, that he's got the county manager's concurrents on projects that are within his, his purview. So, that's important that we do. So, with that, Mitch, I know that there was a couple of questions from some of the commissioners on some of the items that are listed on these two sheets. I'm going to start with Commissioner Oden, because I know he wants to address the Marietta Library, and I'm glad that was brought forward. I wish it was brought forward earlier by staff, but we're glad it's here. I know that there goes a long history about that.
Well, just, just to kind of clarify, we actually did go through the, did talk to the county manager, and what we were asked to do, and county staff was asked to do, was to prepare exactly what you're looking at.
Yeah, I agree. I appreciate that.
And so, that's why it's here today.
We need dates, by the way.
And basically, what, just so the board knows what happened with that, East Marietta Library, there is a list downtown of libraries that, and East Marietta Library has successfully, you know, continually moved up year after year because the county has, the county staff has talked to the, the folks downtown as to exactly what they're looking for. They wanted matching funds and they wanted renderings. And so, the county has gone and done that. Matching funds were in the 2016 SPOLOST. What happened basically just a week ago was we were passed over by the number below us. And so, that's why all of a sudden this came up. And it's like I said, we talked to the county manager and he said do a point paper, and so that's what's in front of everybody. The other question I had, and Mitch, you and I talked about it before the meeting, and it was just kind of to clarify item number two, exactly what it is that, that you are going down and talk to the legislature about concerning host.
Yes, the current host statute, which is, has been used by two counties, the Cab County and Rockdale County. It is one that many believe needs improving. This conversation began with our friends in Cherokee County about how could we actually make the current host statute one that is, provides more benefit to the taxpayer. And so, there's been a discussion through, facilitated by ACCG about how that statute could be improved that would benefit the taxpayer in a number of areas, which I can get into the specifics, but we can talk about that more if you'd like. And, and, and then, so that any county who chooses to consider a host which would require local legislation, and then it would require an act of the commission and local legislation, and then a referendum, but any county that chooses to, to propose a host, which, that the, the statute, it works better for the benefit of the taxpayer. So, that's a two-step process. First, there's some cleanups that have been recommended by ACCG, and that's what this is about. It, it provides you guys the opportunity and the options to consider a host in the future should you desire. It does not say, it is not an act saying that you guys have just, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners have decided to move forward with a host. It just cleans up the statute so that should you guys ever want, want that as an, as a choice and the ability to move forward in that direction, you could do so. Three counties in the state, it would apply to, Cobb, Gwinnett, and Cherokee, because those are the only three counties who do not have a, either a lost or a host.
And a little bit more background on that, is the Cherokee did bring this forward a couple of years ago, and as it currently reads, the statute reads that you have to have, it's a two-question process. And it has to be an affirmative in both questions in order for it to pass. And I believe what happened in Cherokee County is that one of them did well and the other one didn't. So, our hopes, the hopes are here. Cherokee approached me as part of the Metropolitan Chairman's group that meets if we would support helping them get legislation through the ACCG modified so that we can change, make some of the changes in the legislation to put it on one question primarily, and also put some protections in there for the citizens that don't exist in current legislation. Gwinnett was, Gwinnett was asked to support, and they will be providing the support for the changes that come forward as well. Chairman Nash is as well aware of what this program is through the ACCG, and, and that's where we're heading at this point. So, right now, what we're doing is wanting to support ACCG in their attempt to try to find ways to make the legislators, make the legislation easier to implement should we try to go down that, that route.
And, and that pretty much answered my questions as Mitch did earlier, that, that this is basically working in that process in that, you know, as, as we talked about, that I think we're going to have some discussion at the retreat about the host, and then that there were other actions required by the board. So, thanks Mitch.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board for Mitch regarding any of the items on the state priorities or the federal priorities? Thank you so much. Appreciate your team being here today. We look forward to working for you in what we call these, the 40 most dangerous days of the year. So, thank you very much. Appreciate you. So, that takes us to tab three. We have one item for our county finance, and that is to present the information regarding the annual operation of the Cobblestone Golf Course. Hey, Bill.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I have--
Just a minute, Bill. Colonel, you don't want to stay for our golf report? We appreciate you being here, sir. Melanie as well. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, Bill.
That's okay. All right. I'm here to present the annual update for Cobblestone. I'm really just going to be introducing the guys that you really want to hear from, our Mosaic group partners with the Cobblestone Golf Course. Before we get into the 2014 operation results, I wanted to just brief the board on the previous actions that were taken back in 2012 that have really gotten us to this point. And in 2012, we entered into an agreement with Mosaic and to talk about how we could better improve the golf course operations. And at that time, we reduced our outstanding debt, which was over a million dollars. We purchased new golf carts and equipment for, for Cobblestone. We established a reserve policy, and we basically took board action to repay the general fund loan that had accumulated over the years as we were making debt service payments. During that time, we also established a working capital of $100,000 and agreed to come back to the board on an annual basis to give an update. And during that time, we extended our contract with Mosaic for 10 years to give them more authority to run and manage the golf course. This gave them the power to use their purchasing authority for their other golf courses to get us better prices on the items that we needed for our course and give them more freedom to run it like a business. And being that this course is run like a business, I wanted to point out, in the last 10 years, this course has been profitable every year except for one, and that was in 2010 when we were hit and recovering from the flood. So, every year in the last 10 years, with the exception of a historic flood, this course has made money for the county, and we're going to get into how that has transpired to our loan repayments. Before we entered into this agreement with Mosaic, we had over $4 million of outstanding debt, which the general fund had lent the golf course over the course of several years as we were making debt service payments. The first two years in this agreement, we've been able to pay back over $700,000 to reduce that loan. This year, we've had some struggles, which Mosaic will get into, but again, a profitable year. We are able to now pay back an additional $195,625 to further reduce that loan. So, in a three-year period, we have paid back over $900,000 to reduce that loan. And then below on this slide, you'll just see a quick calculation of how we achieve the 95, the 195,000 that we were paying. So, again, struggled this year a little bit, but again, positive year, and I'm going to let Mosaic tell us how we got there and how we achieved those results for the year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. My name is Steve Willey, President of Mosaic Clubs and Resorts, and I think we've been doing this since, Bill mentioned, since 2012, coming to this meeting and giving you updates. So, I need my little, I guess I need something to change this slide with. Thank you. The, about a year ago, actually, we were coming to this meeting and we got called back because of the weather, the ice storm of this particular month.
Could have gone all assy and without hearing about that.
We, why that's so relative is, is we, we occurred, that had an impact on our golf course, in particular our Bermuda grass. And so, we started off the year in January and February, our greens were covered for, for 19 days. Bermuda grass greens, if it's under 30 degrees for a period of time, you need to take precaution and cover them. So, it shows you some significance that we had to cover the greens 19 days last year in those two months where prior year, we didn't have to cover them at all. This year-- This year, we've covered them about seven days thus far, but we haven't had near the extreme weather that we faced last year to the, to this point. So we're crossing our fingers. But many of the north-facing slopes, shaded areas of the course, you know, snow was on there for much longer than normal. And we, we had some winter kill. We lost over two acres of turf last year. And so it took us a while to repair that throughout the, the spring and the summer. And, and we weren't the only ones. There's many courses in Georgia had that same problem. And sod became not only hard to get, but extremely costly to, to provide sod for the golf course. But it's one of those things, when you have an incident like that, you really don't have a choice. You've got to put sod back down, or you won't have any grass to play off of. So the recovery period, you know, did hurt our rounds of golf in the spring and the summer somewhat. And, but by the late summer, fall, we had pretty much full recovery. And I feel like we're going into the winter in good shape. This year, we, we have brought in a new golf course superintendent as far as 2015 goes, and a new assistant superintendent. They brought us some little different approach and agronomic experience. We felt like it was the right move there, and so far, we've been very happy with that. That change really made back in August or September of last year. We also overseeded our fairways, which had been a practice we hadn't been doing for a while. We wanted to give the grass, again, some buffer, and we thought overseeing the fairways would be a good idea this winter. And it's also led to some great playing conditions where there's very few courses in the city that have green fairways, and we're capitalizing with some added revenues. We're excited about what that's brought us, really in, in an incident where we thought we would do it to help the turf. It's sort of brought back that idea that, that overseeing can be a positive thing from a revenue perspective, so it's more than paying for itself thus far. We have a new head professional, and we've been very happy with him. Steve Wagner's been with us for, off and on with the course, and we've elevated him. He's a PGA professional, and he's done a great job with sales. Also, tried to look closer at some of the supporters who've been with us at Cobblestone playing golf and spending money with us as far as supporting them locally with some of these food and beverage items such as snacks and coffee and, and water. And we, this has been, been a positive thing for us as well. We always talk about the golf association out there. It's the Men's Golf Association and how they've been such a supporting group for our, our course out there. We're up to a hundred and twenty members, which is our highest count. It's really made up of people that play the golf course quite regularly. They continue to work with, with us as managers to increase the membership, promote the discount card sales, and help us draw more revenues through the course. And they really become our ambassadors of Cobblestone in, in a great way. They hold tournaments throughout the year, which we typically get average of eighty or so per event. In 2015, there's fifteen events scheduled throughout the year. Some of those are multi-day tournaments, and then it's a very positive group that, that we work with. Through that, through that association with the MGA, they've also generated another nine thousand dollars in merchandise revenue for the course. All their tournament prizes go towards, when their matches go back to the course level as far as prizes go. And then, for the second year in a row, the MGA partnering with the Cobblestone Junior Golf held consecutive tournaments to raise money for the Acworth Police Department's community outreach. Over three thousand dollars was raised, and over three hundred toys were collected for families in need this past Christmas. So that's been a great relationship as well. The junior golf program is so important. As you know, the game of golf, many of you, is, is struggling overall nationwide, and so getting people continue to play in our future is important. So the junior golf program led by Joyce Wilcox out there has been outstanding. She's been three years in a row. She's been a top fifty instructor for kids. She's a master junior golf instructor, and she has been recognized with a lot of awards, and we're very proud of her. We conduct eleven weeks of junior golf camps each summer with a hundred-plus children participating. We also offer golf instruction in the fall and the spring after school programs. And we have a multiple, multitude of ranges for the kids, from five years old, really, from kids trying to make their high school teams as well. So it's, it's a wide variety of ages. As far as one, one other unique event, they've organized a, a weekly golf instruction group for mothers of students that have shown interest in the game of golf, so trying to get the mothers involved as well to play golf and, and learn the game. Onto our equipment. As, as Bill mentioned, we, we did get some new golf carts in 2012, and the problem with golf carts is, a busy course like Cobblestone, it's very important to have good golf carts, so their experience is, is a good one out there. About two-thirds of our rounds ride, ride golf carts, and about a third still actually walk the course today. We, usually these carts, given the rounds, they the feature changed out about every three years or two thousand hours is what's recommended. So our, our third year is actually coming up in June. We have had some battery repair work done on the carts. They're all electric carts, and batteries are the key to, to golf carts. And so we're watching those closely as we come up upon the three-year term. We'll continue to watch that, but we're, we're in good shape as far as the carts go at this point. We are looking to add, again, to enhance our business and the revenue, some pieces of equipment in the kitchen to help the quality of food and increase some of the number of food offerings we can have. One of those is a convection oven, and also some cooler space. We're very limited on what we can store in, in the clubhouse. Our maintenance equipment is in good shape. Again, so important that staff does a good job of keeping that with repair tickets and making sure everything's on, on maintenance records, and it's going very well as far as the equipment goes. I'm gonna let Terry, who's our general manager, Terry Harnage, take over here and keep going.
Thanks again for having us again here today. It's a pleasure to come before you all. It's a pleasure to talk about Cobblestone Golf Course. Golf, golf tournament activity is obviously a big part of what we do. We have a lot of tournaments that we hold at the golf course. And early indications are that this upcoming year is gonna be a banner year for us. We have many tournaments already on the books. Last year, we held over fifty events ranging in sizes all the way up to a hundred and sixty-plus. One of the tournaments that we have actually down at the bottom of the page is the, the tournament we host in cooperation with Cobb County to benefit the Strand Theater with Atkins Engineering. And so one of the highlights of our golf, golfing year, and it's something we look forward to working in the years, in going, as we go into the future, to help benefit the Strand Theater. We were chosen, we were very excited to be chosen for several very prestigious tournaments that we're gonna be hosting. This year, we're gonna be hosting a USGA mid-amateur qualifying tournament. The mid-amateur championship is one of the USGA's largest attended events, and we're happy to host the qualifier locally here, which is very prestigious. Big thing for us, we've never done that one before. In 2016, we'll be holding the Georgia State Golf Association Public Links Championship. That's the best amateur golfers that are not members of a private club. From around the state, we'll be coming for that championship. We've held that in 2011. It was a great event. We had gotten many accolades from the GSGA that they were very happy to once again be coming back to Cobblestone, and we look forward to doing many more with them. Mosaic's partnership, as Bill and Steve have noted before, we re-upped our, our contract with you back in 2012 for another ten years. We're very happy to work with the different entities within the county. With the Parks and Recreation Department, Mr. Cannon is a huge ally of ours, and we look forward to working with him any opportunity we can. And in the same token, we like to be able to help out and with them many times through helping out with agronomic practices or with manpower or what have you. In fact, once a year, Mr. Cannon coordinates with a lot of the parks people to come out and help us with some maintenance things that we can't always handle just on our own. And that's always a great day. We love having them come out. Many of those guys do play golf, so we make sure and take care of them if they happen to come out after the fact. The correspondence with finance obviously is a very important one. The changes that took place with the new agreement in 2012 have worked wonderful. It's helped us to be much more reactive to business needs, excuse me, with business needs, and as they said before, manage it much more as a business. And then through different, different discounted rates that we offer for all the public service people, we see them out there a lot, and we love the, the fact that they make routine traffic, or routine trips through our parking lot to help us with safety and security. In the 2014 operations, as they alluded to before, we had a little bit of a dip in the year, but we still had a very profitable year. As you can see there, through green feed cart fees, driving range fees, food and beverage, other golf revenue as well as the Wendy Hill Golf Course revenue. The other golf revenue is mainly through our discount card sales. Our total revenue was a million six twenty-nine two fifty-two, and total operating expenses of one million three ninety-two six ninety for an operating income of two hundred and thirty-six thousand five sixty-two. For our two fifteen, our 2015 operating budget, you can see there, we are basing this off of forty thousand rounds. We did dip just below that this past year, but we feel very confident with the overseeding of the fairways that, that Mr. Willey talked about before, and the enhanced agronomic practices we're putting into place that we won't have the, the dip in the, the quality of our golf course like we had after the winter of last year. So our total revenue is, we're forecasting at one million eight twenty-four eight fifty-five, and total expenses of one million four eighty-six eight seventeen for a new operating income of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand thirty-eight dollars. Our capital improvements for 2015, once again, as was on Mr. Volkman's screen before, the new agreement allowed for five percent of revenues to be invested back in the Cobblestone in the, in the form of capital improvements. The, the new equipment that he spoke of, that is on a capital lease, so that does take a, a good portion of that. But we do still have plenty of projects that need refurbishing, and, and many of them are taken care of through normal operations. But a lot of them, we do use these, you know, extra funds over and above the capital lease program to be able to get those done. At our, at our, not only Cobblestone, but all of our Mosaic properties, we have a, a practice of, you may have heard of the four disciplines of execution. Mr. Jim Hewling wrote a book. It's a practice of customer satisfaction and quality improvement. We put that into effect when this is the first full year that we've had this, and we're very proud of our, our, not only our staff or the way they've reacted, but our results that we've gotten. A big portion of that is collecting comment cards and finding out exactly what our customers think of our, our operation. We've done that very, very actively this past year, and we've seen what is called our net promoter score raised by seven point eight points. And basically what that is on the comment card, the last question is, how likely would you be to tell one of your associates or family members or friends because of a positive experience you've had to come back and visit this business? Basically measures how well are you growing your business? Even though we had some of the issues we talked about before on the golf course this past year, we were still able to grow our, our overall score by seven point eight points, which in the matrix it's used for, that's, that's quite a nice jump, so we're very happy with that. And then Cobblestone Golf Course as a whole, as the general manager, I've been there since 2010. I, I'm very happy and proud to come to work at Cobblestone every day. It says recently rated one of the top golf courses in Georgia. I can tell you that that line has not changed three times that I've been coming up here to do this presentation with you, because we continually get recognized as one of the top municipal golf courses in the country. Not only in Georgia, not only in Cobb County, but in the country. And it's a truly great partnership, one that I, I am happy to say I'm a part of and look forward to being a part of for many years. Any questions or?
Thank you.
Concerns or?
Hey, Bill. I noticed that he's going in reserves for the capital, but that's not, the, we're still maintaining a five percent reserve at the end of this fiscal, right?
Well, that, that reserve is a five percent capital reserve that we establish every year for them to, to draw down. So they basically get a working capital number of a hundred thousand, which is basically operating cash to start the year. And then we calculate what that five percent capital reserve is for them to make any capital purchases. And like Terry mentioned, a lot of that is eaten up by the capital leases, but the, any residual they could put into operations or other capital purchases that we have, we'll get review with Eddie Cannon. We'll just review anything that we go above and beyond those capital leases.
So, but that's reestablished every year?
Every year. Yes, sir.
And the other, the other point is, we talked about the golf carts hitting their three-year peak. I mean, we've got, I don't know how many golf carts you have.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. So are we in a cycle to replace all seventy-five at the same time, or is there a way to try to work towards replacing a third or quarter of those every year?
Well, something that's very important as we, we work with our, our fleet of golf carts is to do a rotation. We do that to make sure that not one portion of them gets any more hours than the other, and they, they kind of run through the, you know, their cycle equally. So right now, we, we don't have, we are, we're working with our vendor, which is Club Car. They're coming out, as many of these are nearing their, their, you know, what they consider their, their useful life. We're getting many batteries changed out that are still under warranty. They're going through the, the fleet, the entire fleet right now, changing those out and checking any batteries that we can to extend the life. There's times when you can't extend the life. With the number of rounds that we do and the terrain that our golf carts have to negotiate, it's, we are coming up on time where we need to look at, at what we're gonna do as far as replacing the fleet. Since we do have a purchase instead of a, a lease on those.
The entire fleet, or will?
It would, it would be the entire fleet as they're all kind of aging the same time, as, as they move through time.
Okay. Any other questions on board for the team? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that concludes our work session for today, and we'll be back at seven o'clock tonight. Thank you.